Good evening. Welcome to the May 13 Kildalville Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we have two public hearings scheduled this evening, and I will turn to our town attorney to conduct our public hearings.
All right. The following rules of procedure will apply to the two public hearings tonight. A public notice of the hearing was published and the newspaper posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notices will file with the town clerk for entering into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made a part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. If you speak, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesman for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement can be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself as you come forward. The first public hearing will come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kildalville Hills Board of Commissioners to consider a requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning Dare Resorts Inc. to amend Section 153.096 Ocean Impact Residential Zone permitted uses to allow fishing piers to have on-site accessory uses or buildings. No one has signed up for this hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the board on this topic? All right, then there are no public comments.
Any discussion, questions? Anything for staff or?
No. Unless Greg has anything to add. You okay? Okay.
I think we can either just take action or close the public hearing and take action. Either one. We can go either way.
Are you ready to?
I think we're ready to take action.
Then we'll close the public comment period.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no discussions, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Section 153.096 permitted uses to allow fishing piers to have on-site accessory uses. The proposed amendment to Section 153.096 Ocean Impact Residential Zone is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the Town of Kildalville that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows for greater flexibility for uses in conjunction with fishing piers.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. The second public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kildalville Hills Board of Commissioners to consider a requested amendment to conditional use site plan Mary McCormick 808 B Eighth Avenue in the Light Industrial Two Zone to modify the site plan to remove workforce housing designation from Unit 808B. No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone wish to speak to the board on this topic? There is no public comment on this matter either.
Does anyone have any questions? I know Mary's here this evening. Welcome back. Of course, we have staff. Anyone have any questions about this?
I think we discussed it pretty well.
Okay. We're probably okay to close.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And if there's no discussion, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for amendment to Chapter, sorry, wrong page. Page two. The conditional use site plan Mary McCormick 808B Eighth Avenue in the Light Industrial Two Zone to modify the site plan to remove workforce housing designation from Unit 808B. The proposed amendment to, sorry about that. I'm sorry? Okay, great.
So, I'm sorry, was the motion just to amend the conditional site use plan for Nature's Walk?
Yeah.
To, and to, from workforce housing to market rate housing?
Subject to the conditions in the staff report, I think it's being included in that motion.
Yes.
Thanks for your help, guys.
Does everybody understand the motion? The motion is to, yeah, to make amended with the, with the conditions that were laid out. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Started off on the wrong foot. This was downhill.
Okay. You'll get your game on.
I will eventually.
Okay. Now, we will move on to public comment. This is the time set aside, the first time that's set aside this evening for anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic to do so. We do ask if you wish to speak that you approach, speak from the podium. Identify yourself by name and address. If you're speaking as an individual, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would limit those comments to five minutes, please. Did anyone sign up, Mary, for public comment?
No, me.
Okay, that's okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at public comment? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to new business. All right. Item number one under new business is site plan review. This is for the Stan White Storage Warehouse at 504 West Fresh Pond Drive in the Light Industrial One Zone. That's for a proposed 6,500 square foot storage warehouse, seven parking spaces, and associated site modifications. Greg, I know this went through planning board and was recommended to come here. Anything you wish to add? Is there a connection to this?
Other than what you've already said, it's a 6,500 square foot storage warehouse, seven parking spaces. It is in the Light Industrial One zoning district on the west side of our town. Complete plans are included with your package and including a camera permit, our staff comments, and lighting plan, preliminary building plans are in the packet. And on April 21st, the planning board recommended approval with the favorable recommendation and as presented, the site plan's clean and staff recommends approval.
Questions for Greg or?
No.
Okay. A motion would be in order then.
Not me.
I'll make a motion we approve the amendment as accepted or as presented.
Okay, that works.
That works.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any, any questions, comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, item number two under new business is there are some recommendations from the Community Appearance Commission. The first is item 2A for outdoor storage and outdoor display. I know they have looked at this for a very long time, back and forth. They've been looking at outdoor storage and display. And I think after, after what came forward with us modifying our flag ordinance and through their discussions, it, it sounds like that they really, you know, they want to focus on not necessarily, focus on the quality of what's out there or the appearance of what's out there. And so what their recommendations are that were in the packet was certainly first defining the difference between outdoor storage and outdoor display, but then looking at regulations that would speak to the, the quality of the merchandise that's, that's out there, the quality and quantity of how much is out there. This, basically what they're asking for us tonight is to send this to the planning board if we're comfortable doing that, either as they present it to us or with any, any comments with it. And Michael, you're now, you're representing on that board. Do you have anything to add?
I missed that meeting, the most recent one. I started new job training that same day at the same time, so I didn't make that one.
Okay, okay. I do know Chris is here and actually James Ominy just walked in as well. Not to call you out or anything, but we're talking about the Community Appearance Committee's recommendation to us, the first one about outdoor display and storage. Do either of you have anything you want to mention tonight? Okay. Any questions or questions for them?
No. Well, like you said, this goes back many years. It was, I was, when I was on the planning board about 10, 11 years ago, we discussed it, and it was discussed prior to that, so it goes back a long way. And it's, I think it's probably an indication that maybe it's something that we should try to fix in some way, whether it be something we can look, we can do and have the planning board look at and do and see if it works, and we can always go back to the drawing board. But it's, I think it's time that we actually did something.
And it's probably worth noting that they have, they're recommending certain exclusions from the regulations, specifically lumber yards, garden centers, automobile sales, rentals, and repairs. The one thing, and I, I'm fine with sending this to the planning board because I think it will be kicked around well. The, the first thing about that the outdoor storage shall be located to the side or rear of the primary structure, I could see that possibly being a hardship for some businesses because I don't know, when I drive by, most of them are, are out front, but I think that, that would probably be vetted well at the planning board and then can come back to us. I'm not suggesting we debate that tonight, but.
Was that, was that discussed at your meeting? Oh, may I ask?
The displays can be in the front. It's just distinguishing.
Distinguishing the difference between storage and display.
Display can be anywhere on the property, but for it to be considered storage and not display and fall under what they've recommended with the quality and the, and appearance and number of items, then it's got to be in the side and the rear and it's got to be screened. And then it's storage and we, we're hands off.
Got it.
That's storage. If it's not to the side or rear and screened, it's display and you'll fall under the, what the CAC has recommended for display. The, the regulations are purely for display. If it's to the side or rear screened, it's storage and it's okay.
Okay. That makes sense. Hence the definitions.
Yes. Thank you, Mary.
Right, yeah.
What, what are y'all's thoughts on, I mean, one of the exclusions that I thought was odd, given some of the conversations that have happened in the past, was rentals.
But, well, and I wasn't sure, is, is that rentals of automobiles? Yes.
Automobile sales and rentals?
And repairs of automobiles.
Not equipment rentals, not nothing else.
That needs to be clarified.
Yeah.
Automobile sales, automobile rentals, automobile repair. And I, that needs to be, I think you didn't.
Yeah, I thought the same as Travis when I saw it.
But that's what the intent was, correct?
And that's, the way that it's written here is the same way that it's written in our zoning ordinance for permitted uses, and we can surely use semicolons rather than commas to distinct, make that distinction so that they are lumber yard semicolon.
Maybe put automobile rentals first, and then it'd be a little bit clearer to me.
We just copied the zoning ordinance to be consistent, but we can surely get that clarified.
Okay, great.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, a motion would be in order. To forward this recommendation onto the planning board for review.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that we forward this to the, to the, to the CAC and planning board for review. This is going to be one of those nights.
Okay, the motion, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, the second request from the Community Appearance Commission is related to the current language in Section 31.24 states that they are to provide an annual report to the board. And I guess after discussion at their meeting, you know, they're bringing stuff to us as they work on it. They're giving us periodic updates through, through that mechanism. And so I think it came up for discussion that it's probably really not necessary for them to be doing an annual, annual report. And so that's what the request is, to, to remove the, excuse me, to, excuse me, recommend amending Chapter 30 to delete the Section 31.24 annual report. Any questions on that? Okay. A motion would be in order.
I'll try again. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended amendment to Chapter 30, boards and commissions to delete 3124 and the report as presented, Chapter 30.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And just for clarification, that is Chapter 31. It's, it's, says Chapter 30 in my memo, but that's its title.
Oh, okay.
So we're not helping you not get confused.
I could say, I knew that, but I didn't. We, we should have not skipped our practice session.
Okay, moving right along. We are now under, item number three under new business, recommended ordinances. The first is a capital project ordinance for erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works. Debbie?
Yes, ma'am.
You're in for this?
This, this is in line with our beach nourishment project. It would become a part of the town's overall budget document. Prior to beginning the beach nourishment project, the town is required to adopt a balanced project ordinance for the life of the project. In addition, as required by statute, the recommended ordinance clearly identifies the project and authorizes its undertaking. Revenue that will finance the projects are identified and appropriations necessary to complete the project are included. Revenue in the ordinance includes special obligation bonds, distribution from the Dare County Beach Nourishment Occupancy Tax Fund, abhorrent revenue, and other sources of revenue. And appropriations in the ordinance include design permitting and professional services, mobilization and demobilization, contingency expenses, and pumping construction cost. There is no tax rate that's established by this ordinance. That would be established when you adopt the budget. The staff does recommend that the board adopt the beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works capital project ordinance as presented.
Thank you. Questions for Debbie? Or staff? Okay, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the capital project ordinance, beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Let's see, new business item 3B is an ordinance amending Chapter 94 of animals, the animal section to delete Section 94.28 limitations subsection two, the two-year effective period of the ordinance on chicken hens and reporting requirements. A few weeks ago, we all received an email with an update on how the, the last two years since we adopted the chicken hen ordinance has gone to date and we have not had any issues. There've been, trying to go off memory now, 10.
I think there's 10.
10 permits we had established when we adopted this, 20, I think it was 20.
25, I think.
25 restriction or limit. But basically, there is, so, yeah, to date, there have been 10 hen permits issued. So the recommendation is to amend Chapter 94 to take out the two-year effective period and just leave it now as an, you know, an ongoing, that is, it is what it is. And also along with that, so it's to remove the two-year effective period and the reporting requirements. And certainly anytime we want an update, we can just ask staff for that. It would still leave in the restriction on the number of hen permits that can be issued. And if, if we ever get to that point, then the board would be able to revisit that at that time and see if they wanted to change that or not change that. Any questions or comments? Okay, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we amend the, we amend the ordinance, Chapter 94 subsection 9428 limitations subsection two, the two-year effective period of ordinance on chicken hens and reporting requirements.
And maybe just add that as stated in the attached revised ordinance.
As stating in the attached revised ordinance.
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, moving right along. We are under new business item number four, implementation of position classification and pay study. If you recall, at our April 13th meeting, we received a presentation by Becky Veezy. Oh, they're putting it up. And just so you all know, I probably should have said this, we can't see anything back here. This is, this screen's out. So if you're, that's why we're never looking at, but we have a packet, so we're fine. So we can't tell what's working or not working for you all out there. But this is all in the works to get this all fixed, and we're actually going to be taking these down and having monitors here and some monitors mounted on the sides there for the public to be able to view, so it's going to be a much more user-friendly setup, possibly within the next two weeks, but if not sometime in June for our meetings, and then we can all be on the same page again. So, anyway, so they're looking at trying to bring this up. I'll just get back, so we did have the presentation by Becky Veezy with the Maps Group, and she did her overview and then left us with a, a large document to review. And there were a couple of options that were recommended for us to review. And what is being, I think, recommended here and, and what I will tell you, I support, is option two, because that option, one, I think it's something that we can afford to do in this upcoming fiscal year without any additional tax increase beyond what's being recommended for the beach nourishment. But it really does do the most to bring us in line with fixing the compression that has developed over the years because where staff went for so long with not having COLAs or any other real type of, of increase. So this would allow us to, some positions would be reclassified, and then it also, like I said, goes a long way with mitigating the effects of compression that we've experienced townwide. Anyway, I did, I took an opportunity to meet with staff for almost a couple of hours after I read the, the document and researched it, and so that's why I'm comfortable speaking strongly in favor of the option two of the options that Becky presented us at the April 13th meeting. Any thoughts or questions or?
That, the compression is to, there's some people that have very relatively few years of service and some have more, and that, they're, they were close, is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Right, so.
What happens when you go years without, without any cost of living allowance or any increase is that scale that, that staff are hired on and then, you know, move up through their years of tenure or possibly merit raises. If there's no movement along that continuum, then you bring in a new employee that's making potentially the same as we've had someone that may have been in place for 10 or 15 years. And even though staff may know why, it's not because they're not liked or they're not doing a good job, it's, it's because of what's happened over the, the years. Without, without a doubt, whether it's county or whether it's here in the town, that has a negative impact on morale. And so I, I think this has, in addition to doing the right thing for employees, which is what I think this is, I think there will be ancillary benefits to our staff by doing this.
Absolutely. And, and the other thing I'd like to say with this, this is, this is a first step, and I think this is a great step. What I'd also like to see us look for in the future is, in order to keep this going and not have to do this again in five years or 10 years, is, is to see us implement the, a, a serious merit pay system. Because if you don't have merit pay and you don't in, increase the people that, that are doing well and increase people who are, who have been here for a long period of time, you, you go right back to being compressed because, because the cost of living increases everybody across the board. And, and so you, you're going to end up right back where you were if, if you don't, if you don't do that again. And so this, again, this is, this is, in my opinion, and, and I, I realize again where it, it costs money to do that, but, but, but in the long run, you, it costs less to be able to keep the people and I, and Sean, I can see Sean shaking his head, but it, it also costs money to, to train people. And, and I've been through several salary studies with the, having worked for the county for 20 years, and, and you can see the benefits in the long run if, if your retention is there. So you're, you're, you don't have to recruit people and you don't have to pay it in the long run with training. So I just, I, I, I want to say that I, I hope this is just a first step with this.
Good point.
And I think that was, that was a recommendation within this.
It was. Yeah, and I, and one of the sections Becky talks about, you know, to really have a strong payment plan or for, for personnel, you're looking at cost of living and you're, you're looking at merit and some combination or percentage of, of the two, and often on a scale based on tenure is some of that as well, so. Or longevity, I think is the third component, so. So basically, I guess what we're looking at with this is, and, and we'll see, or we'll hear in just a couple of minutes about it's, you know, it being part of the 2015, 2016 budget, so. I guess I wasn't exactly sure why a separate motion was needed, but I think, is that just for the formality of it?
We just thought that it would keep it cleaner to, to get the, typically presenting the budget would have been something that I would, I would have rather we had, the timing had been different with the pay study and that the pay study had been adopted before presenting the budget. That's why when you, when you look at your budget on the personnel, you'll see the, a sheet that shows what's current, and then you'll see the, behind that is going to be with implementation of the pay study, which if, if the pay study had already been done, that would have, you just had the one sheet. But we just felt like a, a motion showing that that had been adopted, and then when we discuss the budget, we don't really need to discuss what was, we discuss what's, what's now been adopted.
Right. But because it's happening at the same meeting, that's why staff wanted to, they didn't want to jump the gun and present something.
Right.
One, you know, just one way if the board didn't have approved moving in that direction, so. Okay.
Or not, or, or not show you a budget where, to show you that it can be implemented, as the mayor said, that it is affordable.
Which is great.
Any other questions on this? No? Questions? A motion would be in order then? Um, a motion would be in order then?
I'll make a motion to approve the implementation of the MAPS group recommended position classification and pay study as presented with implementation in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Kneel back.
Yes. All right, and the last item under new business is the presentation of the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year fifteen sixteen. Debbie?
Thank you ma'am, yes ma'am, in accordance with the provisions of general statute one fifty-nine thirteen, the governing board shall adopt a budget ordinance no earlier than ten days after the budget is presented and no later than July one. Before adopting the budget ordinance, the board of commissioners will need to hold a public hearing at which time any person who wished to be heard on the recommended budget may appear. This hearing may be held at any time after presentation either prior to or during the budget work session. Historically, the board has conducted the budget work session prior to the public hearing. And if that's the desire of the board, we would recommend that the board consider holding your work session Wednesday, May the twenty-seventh at five-thirty, um, which is the same time and date as your second meeting of the month. And schedule your public hearing for Monday, um, June the eighth at, at five-thirty. And just a, a couple of, um, just a couple of things, um, to go over with you in the budget message. And then, um, certainly you'll need the time to, to review it on your own. But the abhorrent taxes, um, are based on a hundred dollar valuation of assessed property. The recommended budget increases the current abhorrent tax rate of thirty-five oh nine to thirty-eight oh nine townwide. Um, and then, it also, in addition to that, um, an additional tax at the rate of thirty-three cent increase applicable to the properties listed within Killdoble Hills Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Protection Works Municipal Service District for taxes of, as of January one, twenty fifteen. Um, the purpose of raising these revenues is listed as taxes municipal service district in the annual budget estimated revenue section. Um, if you, if you recall, the board did, um, at their meeting last month, establish the municipal service district, um, which has that additional thirty-three cent, um, along with the thirty, um, the thirty-eight oh nine. The, um, the recommended budget does include some replacement of, um, certain equipments. Um, the fire department's SCBA tanks, um, new fire truck for the replacement of the nineteen ninety-four KNE fifteen hundred GPM pumper is recommended. And then, along with some additional, um, equipment. Funding of four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars in the street capital reserve fund, along with approximately, um, along with anticipated power bill funds will enable approximately sixty, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars in street and drainage, um, improvements. Um, also, continue with the sidewalk and multi-use path capital reserve fund, which includes a hundred thousand appropriation. And, um, reactivation of, the completion of the public works complex, um, master plan is included. Um, there's some major technol- technology, um, improvements, the implementation of the new software in the police department. Um, this will put them in line and use, and what's currently be u- being used by Dare County and help with, um, with some redundancy. The tipping fees, um, are estimated at eight thousand eight hundred and eighty tons, um, that's at seventy-three sixty-three a ton. Um, and there's also eight hundred and twenty-five tons of construction and demolition at sixty-five dollars a ton. And, um, it also, um, the budget also includes some additional investments in the town fleet, replacing police vehicles, um, two refuge container trucks and several pickups. Um, in speaking with, about the, um, pay study, the, um, and some, um, retirement positions that we've had, we've had an opportunity for the town to benefit from re- reorganization of some positions, um, in the public services department by reassigning the duties and responsibilities of an existing solid waste management superintendent position to solid waste management supervisor, the sanitation team leader and the assistant public works direction position. We've been able to, um, better utilize a position of a construction inspector. The construction inspector, and I won't go into all the details, but it's outlined there what they will be able to do. And part of our desire there is to actually be able to bring in some of the construction oversight in-house as opposed to, um, using the, um, town engineer. The budget does include a one point seven percent cost of living. At this time, the merit and bonus, um, pay plan does remain suspended. We do want to look, um, possibly in the very near future, not next fiscal year, the one after that, to, um, to implement the, the plan that Ms. Veezy recommends in her, in her study. Health insurance, which is provided through the North Carolina League of Municipalities, renewal rates for the current plan year is five percent for active employees and five percent for retirees. We were, we're very pleased with that, um, with that rate. Our neighbors to the south, I'm talking with the manager there, theirs went up twenty-five percent. So, I'm, so, we're, we're very, we feel very fortunate with this rate and, and continue to, um, to advocate the wellness program that our employees, um, are using. And we do recommend that we continue, um, using Dare County for collection of our avenue revenue, um, our abhorrent revenue taxes. And, um, the finance director is continuing to monitor that to see at any point that we feel that that's something that should be brought back in. But it, but at this time, we, we feel that it's beneficial to us to continue using the county. Um, the water revenues, the master plan, we continue to follow that, and, and this budget does incorporate those recommendations along, um, with the retail water rate increased to four percent, which is following, um, that plan. And no increases in tap fees or impact fees are recommended. Um, I think I did, um, skip over, but bears to mention that we have, um, made some, um, increases to some of our fees. Um, brought them more in line with some of our neighbors, um, and how they charge permitting fees and so forth. Um, they have an increased, um, it's been over ten years since some of those have increased. And we're looking to, um, like I say, to bring those more in line. Um, the wholesale water rate to Dare County is one, one dollar eighty-one point five cents per thousand. The, um, the budget, recommended budget does include funding for engineering and construction of the waterline conflicts and waterline projects associated with the street construction. Um, and it does include the final North Carolina twelve water main improvement project phase four and five. The wastewater fund, um, simply continues providing, um, that service with continuing with the, um, eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar payback to the wastewater fund. And then, in closing, as a service organization, Killdoble Hills must be responsive to the community's needs and innovative in our approach to meeting those needs. Each staff member must be actively engaged in our mission to provide the highest quality of service to our citizens and our visitors. We continue to welcome ideas on how we can enhance the quality of our service delivery. Um, each down staff member who contributed to this document is to be commended, but with great appreciation extended to the finance director Beverly Kissinger and the members of the finance department who devoted con- considerable time and energy to providing the finance, um, financial data for the budget. Guidance and input is critical in the preparation of a comprehensive financial blueprint that addresses the goals and objectives of the board of commissioners. The direction and support received from the board of commissioners is most appreciated. And I also would like to add, and I, and I, um, I told this to the department heads at our, um, staff meeting the other week, the department heads did an excellent job. Um, you'll notice, I think there, with the exception of one thing, um, there wasn't anything for me to cut. They, they submitted what they needed, and, um, and I really appreciate that because that makes it, that makes it a lot easier, um, to get it to this point to you. So, thank you. And with all of that, a motion would be in order to set, schedule the budget work session and the budget public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks Debbie.
For Debbie, this time?
No.
Okay. Um, is everyone comfortable with having our work session at our next meeting, which is two weeks from today, May twenty-seventh?
Yep, that looks for me.
Okay, and at this point, um, other items that are shaping up to be on the agenda, do you know much of what is, uh?
I, I do not, I, I think the five-thirty time w- will be fine if it, if it appears that, um, things are gonna get heavy. Then we can certainly, um, transmit that to the board and back and set that you could change that time.
Okay, so, well, we could plan on the five-thirty, but if we find that the agenda is gonna become pretty full between now and then, then we could always look at making it a little bit earlier so we're not here so late or, or what, whatnot. But at this time, five-thirty's probably okay?
That's fine.
And certainly, any, any questions or, or anything you'd like to discuss with myself or any of the department heads, um, between now and then? Please, please give us a call, we'd love to sit down with you and go over anything that, um, you'd like some more, um, information on.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, it could be done in one motion to schedule the work session for Wednesday, May twenty-seventh at five-thirty and to schedule the public hearing for Monday, June eighth at five-thirty. If someone would like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we will conduct our budget work session on Wednesday, May the twenty-seventh at five-thirty P.M. And our public hearing on Monday, June the eighth at five-thirty P.M.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, thanks Debbie, thanks staff.
Thanks. Thank y'all.
Okay, we will move on to commissioner's agenda, Commissioner Midget?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Appleton?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Rubin?
Nothing today.
Thanks. Mayor President Hogan?
Uh, yeah, well, a couple of things, I was looking over that, uh, uh, thing from this community appearance commission, the survey thing. And I, I spent a good bit of time looking at the comments, and it's pretty interesting, uh, that so many of those things, and I referenced it before with outdoor displays, are things that we've talked about year after year after year. You know, whether it be outdoor displays, signage, people, junk in people's yards and, um, of course, other things that aren't problems necessarily, but people like to see more sidewalks and, um, but it's pretty interesting to look through there. And I don't know how many people went in there and did it twice, 'cause, you know, you couldn't stuff in the ballot box or something. I thought it was really interesting.
It was interesting.
I think it's something to think about, I think about it for the future. If we continue to hear these kind of things from people, not just within the, the survey that they did, but otherwise, anecdotally or whatever, I think it's stuff that we should, um, keep an eye on. The other thing is, uh, we're making some really good progress on our disc golf course, thanks to, um, Daryl Davies, friend of yours. And, uh, and Sean, you know, on staff, and, uh, Derek Dow especially, and, uh, some other people that are helping out. And, um, I think I have at least six or seven solid volunteers, people that have emailed me and said they definitely wanna be involved. And we're, uh, we're getting, uh, donations in kind for some work that's gonna be done back there. And I hope to bring you a, a kind of a more full update at one of the next couple of meetings. I wouldn't do it necessarily if we were involved in a long meeting, but I'll bring you an update on it, um, as soon as we have a meeting where there's a little bit of time to present it to you. I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to mayor's agenda, I have, uh, several things this evening. Um, one of them's in your packet. Um, it is a resolution in support of the Dare County request that the North Carolina General Assembly allow Dare County to lever a quarter, to levy a quarter cent sales tax without a referendum. Um, recently, the county of Dare and the town of Nix had, um, have adopted resolutions requesting this. Um, and this is really for the whole purpose of generating dredging funds for Dare County's inlets. Um, if you've been following any of the Dare County meetings and discussions and public comment about the, um, dire situation, um, specifically at, recently at Oregon inlet where it was closed, but also Hatteras inlets, um, something, something has to be done. Um, the, the Dare County commissioners are, are trying to find ways to pretty much have a, a permanent dredging solution until the new bridge is built, um, because it's believed that the new Bonner Bridge, once it's completed, um, will help, I guess, improve the, the conditions there. Um, so, the language that's, um, been requested puts a sunset clause on the implementation of, um, this quarter cent sales, um, tax increase. And basically, um, I think, uh, what we're looking at is trying to show as much as possible if there's countywide support to do this, um, to be able to use this as a funding source for, um, inlet dredging and maintenance. So. Thoughts on this?
I have mixed feelings on this. Um, my, my fear, and, and while I like the idea that there's a, uh, end date for the sunset clause in there. However, my fear is that if local taxes are utilized, then even less is gonna be coming from the appropriate state and federal government agencies that we're supposed to be maintaining this to begin with. Um, if all of a sudden the local municipalities can come up with the additional revenue, then they're gonna continue to devote the money that was supposed to be going to this in other areas. I'm not sure if we have any control over that anyway, but.
Right, well, no, and, and I, I mean, you raised certainly a, a, an argument that's been raised as far as, um, you know, if, if we as a, and when I speak we, I mean Dare County, um, and all of us as part of Dare County. You know, if, if we come out and then provide money for this, it takes the state and the feds off the hook. Um, well, the feds haven't given money for years, this isn't a new problem.
Yeah, it's been over twenty years, they haven't done anything.
Right.
I don't think they're gonna start.
And I think what, what, um, in some of my conversations with a few of the other mayors, um, well, again, no one's really excited about, uh, you know, advocating for a tax increase. Um, some of the other alternatives that have been suggested as ways to establish funding, um, just like what came out about giving down Dare County full control of the occupancy tax, that would hurt us so much more. At least this, we are spreading the tax around, um, for those that come in and purchase things. Um, it does exempt most grocery items, so, you know, trying to, um, not, uh, penalize the folks that, that live here as much. But, I mean, obviously, it is a tax, so it, it's a burden, but the, you know, when, back in March, when the legislation was proposed to give Dare County control of the occupancy tax, I mean, the towns, we were out at the, the county meeting that next morning saying, wait a minute, wait a minute. Because we had run some numbers, and just for the town of Killdoble Hills, if they did take our share of what we get from occupancy tax, we could see a ten cent, ten cent increase to our abhorrent, just to cover what we would be losing in occupancy. So, one of the reasons that there's support in, for this is, um, trying to play the lesser of, of two evils because the other is, is a, certainly a much greater evil than this.
Yeah.
To be blunt. Um, so, but, um, I mean, what you raised, Travis, is certainly something that, that's been discussed and been talked about because, um, the state and the, the federal government should have a greater investment in this, without a doubt. Um, you know, and, and at some point, you would hope they would use some logic and start evaluating, you know, you think about the, the minor weather we had two weeks, three weeks ago, that washed out that section of, of road in front of, um, yeah, Kitty Hawk, um, pressure of Black Pelican.
Yeah.
You know, well, NCDOT, but, you know, hats off to them and the way they did respond very quickly and get that back. But you think of the money when you're mobilizing, paying overtime or whatever for spur of the moment, and that's just a Band-Aid. That's all it is, you know, so, I guess it, it's so short-sighted to think on the state level that we're just, they're just gonna pay money each time there's a, a problem or a catastrophe to fix that catastrophe. Um, but, the fact when, which, which has already happened this spring, when you have boats that can't get out and, you know, they're, they can't pass through the inlets, it's, I, I think it's reached a point now with, with the condition of the inlet. with, with the condition of the inlets, that waiting on the state or feds to do something, and we, like, we mentioned, we've been waiting twenty plus years, so I don't know that this really sends the signal that they're off the hook, because they've never accepted to be on the hook to begin with.
I, I'm like Travis, I, I have mixed feelings on this. I, I can tell you from talking to the public and the people that I've spoken with, uh, the general consensus from the folks that I've talked to, they're not generally in favor of this. No one ever is in favor of a tax increase of any kind. Um, wh- when I try to explain what you've just explained, uh, and the fact that there is potential for an increase, especially for those folks that live in Killable Hills, um, I, I'm met with, well, that's just not gonna happen, and i- it, it's a distinct possibility, so, um, I, this, again, like you said, that's the best way to put it, the lesser of the two evils. So, I, um, I, I have, um, I, I, mixed feelings is probably the best way to put it. I, you know, my, my instinct is to say no, but at the same time, it's, it's, it's really, really hard when faced with, okay, where else is this gonna come from, because I, it, we're missing a budget meeting tonight, um, with the county, and I'm sure that's what they're doing, is trying to figure out a way to come up with that, um, the, the rest of that. So, um, I don't know, it's, it, it, it's a very, very tough process, so, um, I don't know, it's, it's tough. But I can tell you, it's, it is something that I've had multiple, multiple discussions with many, many people on, and it's not, it's not something that's supported from, from the people that I've talked with.
This sort of reminds me of when we decided locally to start mowing the bypass a couple times, I forget, two or three times during the season, and I think cost was mo- pretty modest to me compared to other stuff, but... And the discussion at the time was, well, we shouldn't be, have to do that, and that's exactly right. The other side of the coin is, when people drive through our town, they look at us and say, your town looks bad. They don't, they don't call Raleigh and say, Killable Hills looks bad, you know, they tell us it looks bad. And I know, um, from, I worked at the Oregon Fish and Center for nine years when I first moved here, and when the boats couldn't get out because of weather, of course, nothing to do about that, but if they couldn't get out because of some shoaling in the inlet, they'd say, what are you guys gonna do about this? We'd say, well, it's the federal government's response, really not ours, but that doesn't help.
Right.
So, we're on the hook for it, one way or the other, and I, I agree in principle with what you're saying about, we shouldn't have to pay for it, but if we don't, what happens?
No one else is gonna do it.
And as you said, it's been twenty decades since anything's really of any consequence has been done down there to try to help us, and it should have been. And, no, I don't want the tax either, but I'm, I'm in favor of it. I know that doesn't, maybe not sound right, but, yeah, I think it, I think it needs to be done. It's something, and it is better than what you said, the example you gave, so...
Yeah, well, and the, the other thing, thinking long term, um, is, so if, if nothing is done, um, it's, so if this isn't adopted, and if, if they don't go the route of the occupancy, um, and so they just say, well, we don't know how we're gonna come up with it, I, I can't imagine that that's what they're gonna do, but let's just say they do. Well, that means at some point, we, we will suffer as, as a county from the loss of revenue that's associated with traversing these inlets, and that loss in revenue is gonna have to be, you know, overcome again by tax increases, so there's, I mean, there's really no way around the fact that one way or the other, either by continued complacency or by taking action, there, you have, new money is needed one way or the other, or, you know, um, either new money to fund it, or you're gonna eventually lose revenue, so you're gonna have to replace that with some other revenue source. Um, which is, is really why I think this has all come to a head now, and, and why, um, there is, like I said, the town of Nagshead's gone on record in, in Dare County, and, and, um, I think some of the other towns are considering this at their upcoming meetings as well, so that's why this has come to a head now.
It is far reaching, too, uh, the hotel business, uh, I can tell from personal experience, when, uh, they rely on this. If, for each charter that goes out from either Pirates Cove or Oregon Inlet, six person charter, generally, there's three mo- three hotel or motel rooms being used for that. And if everything stopped down there, then that whole part of our income and the business income in the area just stops. And there again, it's something that we can dig our heels in and say, well, we shouldn't have to pay for it, but...
We're gonna have to find a way. We've gotta find a way.
One thing would be nice is if, if local funds are gonna be utilized, then the local governments would have more control over the activities that happen within the inlet. In other words, the federal government wouldn't be able to shut down an inlet that they don't maintain or own. Uh, you know, it seems logical. If you're not gonna pay for it, then you can't tell me what to do with it. It'd be also be nice if we could do things like jetties and, and things that aren't allowed in North Carolina to, that have been proven to work elsewhere, but, so, alright.
I'm good with it. I think there's some optimism on the bridge, isn't there? That's what I heard, anyway.
Well, we didn't hear in that for a long time.
Because I don't have the latest...
That's another twenty year deal.
Well, I would like to recommend approval of the attached resolution as presented, and I'll make a motion to that extent. Thank you. Um, all these, or any, there's a motion in second, any further discussion? Comments?
I'll just go on record as saying I think something needs to be done, and we do need to pay for it.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, um, let's see. Next, just wanna, um, highlight, uh, an event, Not the Answer NC and the Surf Rider are, um, there's an event this Saturday, Hands Across the Sand, May sixteenth. Um, it's an international grassroots event designed to demonstrate local opposition to offshore drilling and support for clean energy. Um, basically, they've got a schedule for the day, you can go on, um, their Facebook page, Not the Answer NC, but they've got a, um, um, a morning yoga class down, uh, with Village Yoga. Um, then, I guess it's starting at, um, Bonnet Street Beach Access in Nagsheads, or any of the accesses north and south from there. They're expecting, I guess, just through likes and interest from their Facebook page, um, five hundred people locally, so that's why they're saying you can probably choose a beach access somewhere near there, because everyone's gonna be stretched out, holding hands. Um, so if you are not busy at that time, um, they're meeting at eleven thirty. It says, please begin arriving around eleven A M. to find parking, so, just wanted to share that event. Um, and I guess you may have seen the, um, press release that went out, that the westbound U S one fifty-eight bridge opened today. Um, and then I saw a couple of comments from a couple of people that have already driven over that and just said, please be very careful right now. They're still doing some painting of lines and whatnot, so as you travel across, just, or anyone listening, as you travel across, just be mindful that, I guess, there's still some work being done, but it's open this time.
They, they, I, I drove across it this afternoon. The, if, if you get to the west side of the northbound lanes, seems a little weird, but the other side of the bridge, um, they're going down to one lane, again, for the paving where all that was roughed up.
One lane of the two lanes?
Right, and then the, the, uh, what is now the incoming bridge is still one lane, because they're removing all, they're sanding down all the old lines, so the double yellows are being sanded off and removed, so that's still one lane.
Okay, okay. So hopefully, maybe by the weekend, it'd be nice if they have fully, fully two lanes.
It's supposed to be done by the fifteenth, or they start getting fined, so we'll see.
Um, I also wanted to share with you, I think everyone, the board was copied on this email, yeah, I see that they were, but I think it's worth mentioning just to celebrate that, um, David, is it, do you say it, Taws? Taws, um, our water plant supervisor, um, graduated, um, from East Carolina University's Engineering and Technology Department, um, with a B S in Industrial Distribution and Logistics, a minor in Business Administration, um, last weekend. He also became certified in Transportation and Logistics, um, designation from the American Society of Transportation and Logistics. Um, so, along with a business to business sales certification, so he's been busy. Um, but I just wanna go on record to say congratulations to David, and that was really great to, to hear that, so... Um, let's see, what do we have next? Um, if you recall, we had discussed at, um, gosh, maybe our last meeting, or if not the meeting before, um, our last meeting, single family dwellings, and, um, the size of those on the oceanfront. And, um, after having a, a, just a brief discussion, uh, with Debbie, she suggested that maybe myself and, and one other commissioner, and we actually called Travis to see if he was available, could sit down, um, with staff, and so, last week, I guess maybe it was?
Mm-huh.
Yeah, or earlier this week. Anyway, we, we met, um, and Meredith had prepared some information for us to, to review. Some of it's similar to what she handed out, um, at our last meeting, um, but as we started kind of delving into it a little bit more, um, maybe not surprisingly, it, it's a pretty complicated issue. Um, there's a lot of facets to looking at, at, looking at this, and if, if we are looking at trying to make any changes to the regulations. So, um, what I wanted to propose tonight was to see if, uh, you all would be agreeable to having a joint work session with the planning board. Um, and that way, Meredith could share with everybody at the same time, us and the planning board, pretty much what she shared with Travis and I the other day, um, and we could have this, a similar type of discussion. You guys probably will have similar questions that we did, and kind of looking at the, the potential impact and consequences, benefits, consequences of, of what we may be proposing. Plus, with the hope, with the goal at the end of that work session is, uh, to provide a little bit more guidance to staff, to then, to be able to take something to the planning board, if that's, you know, officially to look at, if that's, um, what's the will of the group. So, if you guys are agreeable to that, um, I'd like to maybe look, bring our calendars to our next meeting, and then be looking at something possibly in, you know, sometime this summer, just to schedule that work session. Does it sound okay?
Yep, I agree.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll bring calendars in two weeks to our twenty-seventh meeting, um, and then we can look at scheduling something then. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, let's see. The other thing, um, and this, I really just got a copy of late this afternoon, so there's not a copy, um, I'm passing it around, but, um, there's a Senate Bill twenty-five, which is, uh, a design and aesthetic control zoning ordinance that's related to that. And basically, this is the, what we heard may be coming, and, and, anyway, um, basically, this Senate Bill, um, would, um, restrict a town's ability to put in, um, town-specific design requirements. So, for example, you know, like, Nagshead currently has a bedroom restriction, um, on, on their single family or two family dwellings, it's specific to those, um, or any other town that has something, or if we were looking to do something, it would prohibit the town's ability to do that, um, but it's part of this, this Senate Bill. Um, so, Nagshead, um, is sending, um, a, a letter to Senator Cook, basically requesting for him to oppose this, asking, you know, for his, um, support in opposition of Senate Bill twenty-five. So, uh, we can get, um, the, the letter electronically distributed to, to everybody and, and the copy of, of what's being proposed. But didn't know if, um, and actually, I guess, in case it gets through and onto the House, if we were gonna do this, we'd send one to Representative Tine as well, um, but didn't, and I'm just hitting you with this, um, didn't know if y'all have any thoughts about it, if you had heard about it, any, Travis, like I said, we were briefly talking about it the other day.
We were wondering if they were paying attention or not.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's there.
Do we know if, um, any of the other municipalities have, have done anything? Because, I mean, we know that Southern Shores and others have similar...
Yeah, um, I don't know if they had, and like I said, um, really, Nagshead just, uh, put their letter together yesterday. Um, so I don't know, uh, this is a, a pretty hot off the, you know, the press topic and bill, and, um, so...
Well, we might wanna contact the League of Municipalities as well, because this sounds like it's right up their alley.
To oppose.
At that dinner that I was at the other night, that, for the League of Municipalities, they were saying that they were there for us, and in the past, they haven't done too much, but now they've changed their way of doing things, and they really wanna, you know, help the local towns out, so...
Well, we could, um, certainly send Cook and Tine letters, and also send copies of those to the League of Municipalities and request their support for advocacy against this.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments? So, we, is there consensus to do that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll still get, um, Mary to email everybody an electronic copy. Okay, great. Um, the last thing I have is, um, last week, our town manager celebrated, um, thirty-one years with the town of Killable Hills. And, uh, so I just wanted to highlight that, and thank you for your exceptional service, Debbie. I know we often thank staff, but, um, you know, this is the, the woman, you know, behind it all and behind the scenes often, that's, um, keeping it together, so thank you so much for what you do, and, gosh, thirty-one years of service that's gone.
It's a long time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And that is all I have. Um, so, keep you on the spotlight, Debbie, it's your agenda.
Oh, wow, boy. Nothing this evening, but, but thank you, um, for those kind words, and it has, it has been a pleasure working with the town all these years.
Um, Town Attorney's agenda?
Um, one, one brief thing. I know some of you, or, or somebody brought up the topic of why the town hasn't, uh, regulated and licensed digital dispatching services for pre-arranged transportation services for hire. That's Uber.
Uber, yeah.
And I, I will tell you that there's already a statute in effect, you know, not in effect yet, but that goes into effect on July the first. It prohibits towns from doing anything with that, and right now, there is a House Bill six eighty, uh, that, it has, there were several bills introduced back in March, this one was introduced in April, and it's pretty comprehensive, and if it gets passed, uh, it will also prohibit the towns from doing anything. The state is gonna preempt regulation of those services, and it's a very comprehensive bill, and it, uh, the, the bill as it's proposed now would go into effect July first, two thousand fifteen, so they must be fairly confident they're gonna meet that deadline in passing this, so there's nothing for the town to do at this point in time unless the legislature says, no, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna let the towns do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, they were recruiting there last week, I saw, in town here.
It's huge, it's a huge organization.
Mm-hmm.
The revenues are in the billions.
Wow. Wow. Well, thanks for that update, I appreciate that. Any questions for Stephen? Okay, um, we'll move on then to consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, two items on the consent agenda this evening. The minutes of the April thirteenth, twenty fifteen, and April twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, meeting, and the position reorganization in the Planning Department. Um, approval of the consent agenda will record the board's consensus approval of the position reorganization in the Planning Department, which came effective September sixth, twenty fifteen. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda submitted, and a motion would be in order.
So moved. Second?
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, this is the second time that's set aside this evening for public comment, same guidelines as before. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Seeing no hands, we um, guess a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anything else? All those in favor, please sign the number saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you all very much.
Thanks everybody.
Have a good night.